Guys, you do this stuff.
Thank you. It being 6:30, I call this meeting of Manchester by the Sea Select Board's order. Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And so, yes?
John, yes.
Okay. The first order of business is public comment on non-agenda items. Is there any public comment in the room or online on non-agenda items? Are we on the agenda?
I believe we're here to talk about parking platforms.
Okay.
I believe that's on the agenda, unless it's been reviewed.
Okay.
Good enough.
Here's that. Okay. Um, this, I'm going to give you the thirty. No, I was going to, Chairman's Report, um, just one not-so-small thing. As you all know, I think Sue Thorne is moving out of town, and we're going to have a party for her, and I would like us to consider at our next meeting, declaring the June 12th, 2024, the Sue Thorne Day in Manchester by the Sea. There will be a party at Tuck Point from about 4:00 to about 6:00.
What's the date on that?
June 12th. He has served the town for several decades, and always with good temper and good humor. Okay.
Okay. Sue Thorne, I'm not sure.
Was she the clerk?
No, Sue was on the Board of Health. She was on the CP, Community Preservation Committee. She was the chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
I know the name was very familiar.
She, she, she's, she's, she's spent, I think, thirty, probably thirty years on various committees. Okay. Our first article, our first agenda item is to review the articles spanned the motion makers. And we will, oh, wait, there's one other thing we do, and I will always forget, the action items. I think everything, no. We were supposed to have a national grid follow-up today, and I guess there is no follow-up from the national grid.
Yeah, I know that I'm the transformer for the new compost facility. Still waiting for it to ship.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, I don't have an update on the Bella Street situation. Let me, let me follow up with them.
Anne?
Yes.
So to that, didn't we give a provisional approval to them?
For the Parvillas?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I think we did.
Yes.
That's, I just want, all right, good.
The other thing I had a question on is, I had requested that we have a discussion on the 911 Center, that review. At the same time, we have the firing police chief reviews. It sounds like, based on the action items, that that's getting delayed because we're trying to invite members of the 911 Center to join us. Is that how I read this?
Right, we can do that for a subsequent meeting.
I just want to make sure that doesn't get pushed out too much, because if they're bringing, it seems like they're bringing on another town, you know, with Reading, I think we just have that obligation to review what's gone on. I am a little, I'd like to understand the process for bringing on other towns. I thought we had to approve that as an existing town. So there's some clarifications there. I think we need to have that meeting with them, and I prefer it not get delayed past May. If for some reason they can't join us during the month of May, I would like the board to have a discussion on it anyway. That's okay.
Any other? Okay. We we normally count someone from the select board, write the first bookkeeping motions.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so those first two articles typically.
Yes. Who would like to speak on the first one?
I don't know.
There's not much of a comment to be made on the first two.
Who was second?
I'll second.
Article two. Kathy?
No, second?
Article three, which is the North Shore Agriculture, what's technicals?
I'll do that.
I'll second.
And then Jeff, the lady who's our, you know, we need to answer questions.
Article four is the
The budget.
The budget.
So typically, that's the pair of both boards.
Okay. So I expect that Sarah Melish will move, and I'm the second, and we can both speak.
Or vice versa.
Okay. So Anne and then Sarah. Article five, that's the capital budget. Probably the same.
Yeah, typically, that is the same.
Article six.
And, and, Chair, Madam Chair, excuse me. Do you want to speak on either four or five?
I will speak briefly. Sarah wants to speak at more length, since she's the chairman, here's the final.
She usually makes her statement on four. You, you, the chair of the select board normally makes a statement at the opening of the meeting. Do you want to, do you want to make a statement on Article four as well?
I think we can pass on that.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Um, sorry, uh, I will not make this, I will not have a statement on Article four.
Okay.
Article six is a very long article of what is intended to be, the motion will be for the town to purchase a portion of the Mason's property. Okay?
No, second.
So
Is Brian, Brian? Thank you. Brian, will you also speak on this?
Yeah, I think so.
Usually the mover is also the speaker.
Mm-hmm, shaker.
And shaker.
So, Anne, on this particular article, someone brought to my attention that we have some language in here which may be undesirable because it would authorize the select board to acquire by eminent domain as well as purchasing. And in the past, when we have discussed partnerships, we have explicitly not included eminent domain, OS2NOS. So that language is in here, and I think it was unintentional on our part, and
It is the traditional language that we use when acquiring property.
Right.
And, and it has been used before many times, and it is, you're right, it has caught, it is a reason for people to be upset.
Yes, and so I'm just bringing that up because as part of moving the question, if we would state today that we intend to eliminate that language on the floor, make a motion.
With Greg to write that.
Yeah, make a motion.
That motion's staying.
Because I know, you know, Alan likes to understand who's going to make a motion.
Yeah, no, I'll be, I'll be working close with Greg to get that word in correct.
Right, so the motion will do just purchasing a portion of the eminent domain.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could ask Greg a question, what's the source of funds there, Greg?
It's appropriation and transfer from the stabilization account. So $500,000 in appropriation and $500,000 from stabilization.
Thank you.
If anyone in the room or online has a comment, please put up your hand and move it to your right here. Article seven is launch service. And for those of you who don't have it in front of you, the idea is that the town will buy two boats from Tom Baker, which he has used for a life service, and run them through and, and set up a service where people pay in advance for the season, and that those prepayments pay, will pay for the sales. There is money in, there, there is money in this article because we have to have the money allocated to pay people, even though the, they will, they will be paying for it, and it will be going back into our accounts. But we have to be able to pay people on day one. So that's, that's why we're simultaneously saying that it would be fully funded by user fees, and there's a little more than $50,000 in operating expenses.
So regarding this one, though, we also gave by on a deadline to get those commitments, and it's my understanding that has not been met.
So, the he hadn't made the commitment in terms of expressions of, in terms of actual payment, no. About 75 people have, have signed up. Only a dozen or so have actually paid. You know, I know that the desire was to have that came in hand prior to town meeting. And a lot of people said they'll pay once they know that town meeting has approved it. So there still is time after town meeting to yea or nay it, whether or not those funds have materialized. But I know that is different than what you had expressed earlier.
So are we suggesting a different deadline? I, I just am not comfortable supporting this without, leaving it open-ended.
Yeah, I think the deadline has to be that those funds have to be in hand. I would suggest the deadline has to be in hand. Those funds have to be in hand prior to the start of the service in midday.
In order to start the service, you have to buy the boats. Right? Okay, so the purpose in my mind was to make sure we have enough
Cash coming.
Right, it's not just the amount of cash, but the human commitment, the, the number of customers was important because that would signal whether or not we will have the right number of customers in the following years. If we, if you're proposing a new deadline, what's the deadline? End of the month, April 30th is another two weeks.
Well, so it gives a week after the town meeting. It's a little
When would you have to purchase the boats? Because I, I would just, I'm trying to understand the process here, if we're talking about changing the process.
You can't purchase the boats until July 1st, is that correct?
No, because the funds would come from fund balance.
Right, that's, that's my concern.
Those, those funds would be available right away. You know, so, so realistically, you, you need at least two weeks to get it all in order. So, so it'd be, it'd be basically the first of May.
And how long does it take to get, don't they have to be Coast Guard inspected and approved?
The one already is.
And that is transferable to municipality?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
Yes, please, do be in name and address.
Laurel Babindam, Hampton, New Hampshire. I am one of those people that said, yes, I will sign up and made a commitment to buy on. But it has never been expressed to me that there was a deadline that it had to be paid by. I would gladly have paid it if you had articulated and communicated to, and I think that is probably that situation with a lot of people who made the commitment.
Thank you. I think that's important information.
Yes, please, sir.
Yeah, Mark Strass, moring permit, non-resident moring permit holder since about 1989. And certainly, if the launch service were available with parking, we'd sign up in a minute.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I second, and that's another issue that
Point of order, whatever. Yeah, you don't do cross-talk.
And additionally, that's not what's being discussed at this point on the agenda, so we should not be discussing anything out of order.
Yeah, we have parking coming up later.
So, question, so you really, we really need a certain amount of time between when the money is in and then when the boats are really in the water and set to go. Seems to me that's got to be at least a week.
Yes.
Or maybe two weeks. So it seems like, I don't know, a May 15th and a Memorial Day start or something is about the best. It's about the best we can do. I mean, realistically. And we know how Bayon operates, he's a very enthusiastic guy, and to the comment that was made, yeah, he probably said, you're in, and there wasn't any timeline, and it's just, you know, it wasn't intentional, that's just the way it happened. Some sort of a note has to go out to everybody
Yes.
in 24 hours.
Yeah, I agree, I will, I will talk to Bayon tomorrow.
So I, I, I think we need clear timeline, that you mentioned a couple of different dates in writing. Something that we could talk to at town meeting. But I would hope that the boats are not purchased and the service is not launched unless the select board, specifically after town meeting. We want to make sure those people have actually paid, and it sounds like there was some miscommunication here about giving them.
A two-year-old will do anything. Makes his grandfather.
Doesn't make you that, maybe I asked the question. Yes, but you need to identify yourself.
I Johnson, Wilton, New Hampshire, so I'm not a resident. Do you have the data from the past performance from Manchester moring service? Yeah, how much money did it give last year?
Yes, there's a business plan on our website, you're welcome to look at it, it's on
I, I'm not making this decision, it's not my money being directly spent. I'm just asking if you have that information already.
Yes, and it's available to everybody on the town website.
That seems pertinent to the discussion.
And I think the number of moring, the number of registered users has to be more this year than it has been in the past.
Exactly, that, that's my concern about making sure we don't leave this open-ended. So yes, we have verbal commitments, but until people actually pay, sorry, it's not a commitment. And I understand there was some miscommunication there, so I do think extending the deadline is fair to make it very clear that there's a payment deadline, and the message out to the potential customer should be that if we don't get X number of customers paid and signed up by this date, there will be no launch service. That's the clarity I think we need to send out to the potential customers.
Because this is not going to be
This will not be tax paid by the town, right.
And I think that it's also that if you pay, it will be refunded.
That's right, if not enough people sign up and you've paid, it will refund us. All that language that we put in the plan, it needs to be
I thought there had been many things I overlooked. But anyways, I would suggest potentially new dates of May 8th would be the deadline for payment with the target date of starting the service on the 22nd.
So will we then give the final go-ahead from the select board?
So you meet on
At a meeting prior to the, what is it, would you say 22nd?
Right, so you meet on the 6th and the 20th, your normal meeting dates.
So, May 20th, the select board, go, go, go decision.
Okay.
Okay, and then May 22nd would be start of service.
Is it our intention not to buy the boats until that date?
So it seems
Right, because
Nothing I'm getting at, we shouldn't be buying the boats if we're not gonna
I understand, so that, that wouldn't, that doesn't, we can't wait till the 20th to decide to buy it.
No.
Right.
So do you want to pull in the deadline?
So
Yeah, May 8th deadline.
May 8th deadline.
So we, we could make it a May 6th deadline. You can do it that evening.
That gives two and a half weeks.
It's a, it's a, you know, it's not quite two weeks after the town meeting, that's that's what it is.
Okay, but, so here's, here's the thought. If tomorrow Bayon sent a clarified message to everyone, hey, it wasn't clear, we need your money now or there will be no service, right, the language you just discussed. And we gave a deadline of May, you know, 3rd or 4th, you know, sometime before our meeting on the 6th.
By noon on the 6th.
By noon on the 6th, great, by noon on the 6th, we have to have, you know, 70 people paid in full, or there will be no service. Does that give, so do we have a go decision on May 6th? Does that give us enough time to buy the boats to start?
Yes.
Okay, after all of that charitable conversation.
I guess I'll be doing
Okay.
And so, May 6th, buy the boats and then service starts when? On 25th?
Maybe, maybe for fire, just before
Sometime.
I think we said the Thursday before, it'll be the 23rd. May 3rd, May 23rd.
An opportunity to work the kinks out.
So 5/8 is the
Okay.
5/6.
So I'm sorry, so Kathy's making
Okay, I'll move, who's going to second this?
I'll second.
Becky?
You second, you second.
Yeah?
Okay, and that's our meeting, okay.
And I assume that Kathy will speak. No easy task.
No one else is going to.
Sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Article eight is $7,550,000 for capital improvement to the water and wastewater system. A lot more than this.
I can move that.
Okay. You know, we're lining up boy, girl, boy, girl.
I'll second that if you'd rather.
I'm done.
Never going to volunteer again. Great.
Sure thought about two years ago.
Um, the article nine is Okay, I guess I need to back up a little bit. I'm not sure that we have made our position clear on Article seven, the, the launch. Do we suggest a vote on this?
So, so we did vote.
Yeah, we recommended
With the caveat, I'm not subscribers.
Yes.
Yeah. Article nine. We make our recommendation on our town meeting floor, this is we, we are currently giving $150,000 from the library accessible bathrooms to the matching portion of a grant for a facility for, for feasibility study for expansion of the library.
I'll speak to that. I think that however, as a board, we have to
We have to take a position.
We have to take a position.
Cannot, we, you all, the four of you
Yes.
Position.
Please.
And so, my name is Dave Lums, David Lumsen, and I'm on the team with this road. I'm chairman of the Library Trustees. And I can tell you all, the Library Trustees and as well as the American DiA, the ADA Advisory Committee have both unanimously endorsed this article, approved this article, and both committees told your committee to recommend it, unanimously.
Um, Ms. Davis?
David.
David, no, I'm sorry, some, yes.
Hi, sorry, this is Sarah Davis, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry to have to zoom in, thanks for, thanks for making the time. I know I had sent some materials to the select board in the last couple of days just to make sure that you guys had the same background that we presented to FinCom about the grant process. If it would be helpful, just literally 60 seconds, I can just give you an overview. You, you probably know we were accepted into the state grant round about this time last year to prepare our application, which we've been working on with our library director, Cynthia, who I think is in the room, very diligently. As part of the application, we do need this town approval for this warrant and the very specific language that talks about accepting funds for the town to spend the $150,000 for this initial planning and design phase, which would be working with an architect if we're selected to advance. So, so again, the 150 only gets spent if we're selected to advance, and the state matches with $100,000, so that about 250 would be used to engage with the architect on, on the plan. And then hopefully, if we're selected and we're moving along, the construction grant is, is significant. As the materials show, if we, it would be about 50 or 60% of eligible cost that the state would cover. And we have modeled out how it would work if you assumed a $10 million new building just for the sake of having an example. And when you factor in the state grant, the library trust funds, which is both the the funds we hold in the library and trust and the library foundation, which has formally made a motion to support the project that we would get to a point, and then private donations, we would get to a point where the town portion would actually be as low as 20%. So we just want to make sure you guys had all of the facts, they know that there was some
We have it, thank you very much. Um, there has been some discussion of, of having someone from the library write the motion. I think that's inappropriate.
Yeah.
Right, and with the aid of our moderator and, and town attorney can put this in the, in the format, which is, which is appropriate. And I think they have all of the material they need.
Yeah, I, I think our only, our only request was just to move the language around the reappropriation because it kind of comes in the middle and it makes it a little bit hard to follow.
Thank you. Um, you can discuss that with Greg here after we, the motions are not yet written.
Okay.
Well, they are, but they are not yet engraved still. Okay, is there further discussion on the board on this?
Do we still need to take a position?
We need to take a position, right.
Well, we can take it on the
Well, we can't really take it on the floor unless we each
Right.
So this is really our last check. We could, we could put it off and have a meeting just before town meeting. But I think we have the information we need.
Yeah, I, I personally found Sarah's email very helpful. The table, you know how I guys like to, how I like tables. That helped me understand the puts and takes. My only concern about the article or the project is timing. Certainly, if you can get the majority of money for potential $10 million renovation from another source and tax revenue, that's a good deal. My concern is around timing and what would happen if we don't get the grant. I don't want to leave the bathroom conversation, you know, dead in the water. Is there some contingency plan for what happens if you don't get the grant? It's been two years since the request was first made to upgrade the bathroom, so what are we going, what are we going to do? So those are just my open questions.
And also additionally, I have concerns about
Um, I have concerns about. The wording in that. Uh, it doesn't really discuss. Looking at. Other locations, I know we don't have anything in town, but. Um, we have so many major. Infrastructure needs coming up and the monies that, the millions and millions of dollars for these very. Currently critical issues, I, I, I'm concerned about. Not putting those as the primary focus.
I think it's. Ten or twelve years ago, there was some discussion of taking the parking lot at the corner of Brook and Norwood. Um, and putting a library extension there. So it's not, yes, please.
That's, that's not on the table for now. But you may ask a question first. What happens if we don't get the grant? Can Cynthia, our library director, answer that question, might help to clarify things?
Okay, that, that was my question. That was Kathy's question, but yes, okay, yes, please.
We don't get the grant, our intention is to still try to. Um, find a way to move ahead. Uh, with this opportunity, but if we cannot move ahead with this opportunity, we would have to look at. Other situations, other ways that we could do that, it, it would require. The town to take on more of the funding of the project. And that's why we want the grant right now, because we're, we're hoping that that's the case. I do understand there's a lot of competing needs in, in the town, um. But I think this is an opportunity, if you look at it, it's an opportunity for us to possibly get. A very large amount of this paid for by the state. Um, we still need these renovations, we need that bathroom, we need more than the bathroom, actually. Um, and so that's why we're pushing to do it right now, the timing is, is such that it would be two years from now.
Thank you.
To. Some of the. Information that's been forwarded to us, um. Talks about, and I love the library, I am a library user, I used to own, co-own an independent bookstore. I'm a bibliophile from way back. But. I'm on the select board and, and as such, we have to look at. Present and long-term concerns for the town, one of my, some of the. Information we received was talking about the need for more uh space for students and. We have a wonderful new elementary school with media space, our high school has. Media space. And we are going to be having a senior center, which will also be providing some space. Um, as well as some other potential options, my concern is when what we have to look at is. Hardening up our wastewater treatment facility, which is. Pretty much the lowest point in town and in need of repairs, we have, we have a lot to look at and. I think that we need to keep that in mind, and you saying that if you don't get the grant. You're looking to the town, I, it's, that's one of my concerns when I'm talking about this. Is that we need to focus money on critical.
To.
Infrastructure.
Right, to, um. And I hope. Becky's concerns, in a vacuum, the library looks like a great project.
In a what?
In, in a vacuum, as a, as a single standalone project, it's great. But we have. This wasn't, I think this was even on the facilities master plan. Uh, list, alright, that was, how long was, did that take to put that together? I think that we have to look at the bigger picture here and take a look at what. The needs are. Wastewater treatment, um.
Water. Move in the D B W.
We do become a public safety building.
The flooding fire department.
No, these are all.
Goes on.
All issues, and I think they have to be.
And we have a school coming.
We have a school.
I had. Yeah, I got a comment, I understand the money, the money situation here, I'm looking at it from this perspective. This is a pre-design or a design step that's involved here. And the risk in terms of money is fairly low, all of the other capital items, and we've been through them, are eighty, a million doll, a hundred million dollars, it's a lot of money. This is at most a hundred and fifty, and it's probably less than that, because our sit, our situation here is not. A really elaborate type of expansion sort of situation that would suck up a lot of money. It's, of course, if we don't, if, if we aren't selected, the money doesn't go anywhere, it's still in our pot, but if it does, it's at most a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is not much. And that's something that has to be done. In terms of library expansion, one way or the other, now I know that the expansion itself is five to seven years down the road, and I'm not sure what. Monies are gonna be needed for what capital items then, but I know that we're gonna be spending money in five years and seven years for, for big stuff. Um, how that fits together in all of this, I'm not sure, but I know that the timeline always. Is not what you think it is, it's longer, it always is longer, and to take this first step. Puts us in line for construction one way or the other, now whether we actually go the next step right away, or we go the next step in. You know, six years down the road as opposed to four. This step at least has to be taken, and then we see, see how things play out, but the library. I've spent some time there over the past couple of weeks, just sitting there doing some reading, doing the crossword puzzle for like a half an hour, who's walking in, who's walking out? It's everybody, it's no particular, uh, no particular group. Um, and I would have to say that, you know. The expansion idea that's planned here is something that the library really needs to support its programs, in particular. People with preschool kids, and probably I don't know, the library, since Cynthia would know, I don't know if your, half your programs are angled at. Early, you know, younger people, and as young parents, of course, they're looking for things to do with their kids. And the library serves a very important part of that, but it has to go lots of different places for that, I've. I'm certainly in favor of trying to consolidate more of those types of activities within the building.
Madam Chair, I have a suggestion.
Yes.
So, I think what bothers me about the current, excuse me, language on the table. Is that it, it feels like it's presupposing a particular solution, okay? When we tackled the RITanda challenge, we asked a firm to come up with multiple options. That the town could then say, this option is twenty million, this option is twenty five million, gave the town a choice. If we could write the motion to require that a minimum of three options. Come out of that design effort. Give the town flexibility, and then we can determine, you know, we can integrate. These thoughts into the facilities master plan, and we can all decide what's in the best interest of the town.
So, I appreciate that, that, uh, that request, um, we are very tightly. The language needed for the warrant article to be accepted into the application for the grant. Um, is, is quite specific and would not allow for that to be the case. Now, I, I also want to say though, that this is a first step, it's a first step for a possible design. Renovation project. The town would still be voting before they would take any construction project on, so. If we receive the grant and we go ahead and we make the design, there's then another whole process of. We present that design to the town and the town says. You know, now is the time, now is not the time, we present how we believe we're gonna fund that, we would have a capital campaign also.
Uh, let's, let's, let's not go much beyond, uh, we understand what happens when you have a big construction project, yeah, let's, let's not. Fund the construction yet.
But you have a chance to say no then, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
I was, I was, correct me if I'm wrong, Cynthia, but I, I, I thought the. The library process, the grant program is similar to the school process, and we are required to look at multiple options. Is that not correct?
We're, we're required in our building program, which is a piece of the application. To look at at least two sites. So it's a site neutral.
Two sites.
And if I'm, it's different from, and this I think you all are going to. Get people concerned about that, when, um. They're being asked to pay for out of tax dollars for so many things, as opposed to. An option of looking at repurposing the current space, no. Which you do all the time, and for right now, you have a bubble of young children. With people bringing them in, swap out some space for another, just. I think you need to be aware that, that there will be these questions coming up. From people at the meeting, and. Why they're not, I mean, this, this, this is for expansion, that's what it's talking about, it's not talking about. Explore, exploring other options.
Well, it does say renovations, expansions, or take any other action.
But at the end, right, it's, I mean, it's still, and what I read, when I read through the grant. It's, it's focusing on expansion, and that concerned me. Just from the standpoint of monies that will be being asked for.
You have your hand up?
I'm sorry. But, uh, I, I'll, I'll bend to say, I, I think, I think it is prudent to look at multiple options. As, as you go through this process, and I think if the trustees are willing to commit to that, I think that should be stated. At the meeting, we have to connect, that's the state requirement. So that's what, that was my understanding.
One, I, I think I was confused by the comment about multiple sites or multiple options. Multiple options at the same site is what I'm looking for. You know, because there are different ways to attack a renovation, and they can have wildly different. I, I just want to make sure we're, we're not gonna get one.
Why, why you, but why not look at?
Oh, I'm not suggesting we shouldn't, I'm, I just, I'm concerned about, um, making sure we get. Multiple options, whether it's multiple sites or not, you know, that's fine, but I also think there are multiple options within the, the, the given site, and. It would be nice to have that, all of that information will be brought back to the town.
That's the, that's the purpose of the pla, planning and design, I, I agree with you, Kathy.
It doesn't feel that way based on the language, that's why, however the motion is, I know the motion is what counts. And when we go in, in front of town meeting and that, I can definitely support. Um, you know, this, this study, this design study, it, but it needs to come back with multiple options, so that the. We can then do that integrated plan, figure out the timing, and make sure the town.
And that needs to be conveyed.
In the motion.
In the motion.
And the discussion.
And in the discussion, just so that everybody's on the same understanding page, Beth Heisy has her hand up.
Beth, please. Beth. Can you unmute yourself?
Can I, can I say something while we wait?
Don't, you, I know you have your hand up and you've had your hand up for some time, um. I'm going to ask Beth to try and unmute herself.
Oh, I think I just did it. Think I finally did, oh, sorry.
Okay, Beth, please.
Um, uh, my concern is that if we don't go forward with this, that we're gonna end up status quo. Leaving us with a lack of space for the handicap bathroom, and, which I believe they've. Been looking for some solution for that for quite a while. And that they're not gonna have, uh, enough room for the story hour, which I think you all got my letter, I don't know how many times. And how many people cannot attend story hours with their kids, their grandkids, whatever. And because of lack of space, I mean, it's such an important program for kids. Um, who are preschool, and that is, that won't work for. Um. I know that it was suggested that we could use the school for that, but. Story hours are during the day while school session is in session, so that wouldn't work. And, and also the. Uh, space for the teenagers to go to, that right now they have to, they have that teen loft, but. That is not handicap accessible, and it's not fair for some kids not to want to participate. Out of embarrassment or whatever, for, um, not being able to access that loft. So I really urge you guys to go forward with, um. Supporting this article.
Um, Sarah Davis, you have new information?
Yeah, I ju, I just wanted to read it on the timing and, and going back to what, um, was said about the different demands on the town, because that's certainly something we addressed with FinCom. Um, this, a, as you probably know, the library has had a lot of physical problems, if you've been in there anytime recently, there's a giant. Uh, plastic covering because the ceiling fell through during the rainstorms, and again, I know we have lots of infrastructure costs. Coming down the road, but as, as Cynthia says, we will have the opportunity in April twenty twenty six. To vote again on whether or not we actually want to do the construction, so this is just for the one fifty, and between now and. When this building would occur in July twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven, I'm pretty sure the library is actually gonna have some. Maintenance repair projects that would be close to the two million dollar portion that we would be asking for. If we ultimately made it to construction, so I just think in terms of when we. Are considering town, town priorities, of course, we're not going, we, we understand P pass and all of the important. Um, other resources of the town, but we do have a very, we have an old building as well, and we just want to emphasize the opportunity to have a sixty percent. Match that won't come again for seven years.
Thank you. Gretchen has her hand up. Gretchen.
Yeah, I think actually that may have just answered my question, uh, my, it was that.
Need name and address, please?
Oh, sorry, Gretchen Wood, nineteen Brook Street. Um, I, I thought that the last time that the state offered this type of library money. Was two thousand fifteen, and, and I may be wrong about that, but my other understanding was. There's no, um, set time for them to offer it again, they offer it when there's money, but. It, it could be five years, seven years, it could be ten years down the road, and that. For that reason, it seems to me that this is really important for us to get onto this bandwagon right now.
Thank you, um, we are, we are running really late. Um, I think this has been a valuable discussion. Um, but I think it may be time to ask for a motion. And is there a motion to approve? Um, the expenditure of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Recommended.
Recommended.
I'll make that motion.
I will second.
John?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
Yes.
Kathy says yes.
We just were studying, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that a yes for you?
That's a yes for, that is a, you got it, you got it, yes.
Thank you very much.
Please. Thank you, let's move on.
Uh, Madam Karen?
So, so you need a second.
Okay.
Oh, John and Kathy.
Uh, yeah, uh, yeah, I am.
And you can speak to it.
I'm happy to, did you second for the?
I'll need some help on that.
The motion.
And I'll do both. Make it easy for.
I will speak, yes.
Okay. Who, who is the seconder?
Kathy.
Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Article ten. Um, establishes a, um, separate fund. For the opioid, opioid settlement stabilization, um. It's money that we are getting from the federal, uh, government, and we need to put it upwards. Oh, I'm sorry. Settle it from the, sorry. Becky will speak.
With Todd's help.
Okay, fine, so.
I'll second.
How much of the call is to move on, moving?
Who's, who's?
Uh, Becky.
Becky, and Brian, Becky is moving and Brian is seconding and Becky will speak to it. Um. Is the regional school district. And.
So typically, that would be the school committee.
That would be the school committee, so.
And them alone.
Yeah.
And the next is the feasibility study, which I think was also going to be the school committee. Article thirteen. Um, who's the first fields? And I think I would like to move to that.
I'll second.
The only complication here is, is that it's been suggested to be funded in about twelve different ways. And and I think we deserve, the, the voters deserve to know that this is really the last one. Um, Article fourteen is the community preservation funds. Brian, I'm going to volunteer you for this one.
I thought we want policy PC.
Oh, you weren't volunteering, you.
Being, you're being voluntold.
You can sign up now.
Kathy?
Sure, a second.
I, I speak to this too?
Yes.
I think that Joan McDonald was planning to.
Oh, sure, sure.
Yeah.
Joan McDonald, they do have members of their, to speak on each one, each line.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll move this.
You, you, you move it, you don't have to talk. Okay? Um.
Let me, I think, I think Joan McDonald is, I think Joan McDonald is the mover, so would Brian be the seconder?
Sure. And work for this then.
Article fifteen is an easement um on the Manchester Housing Authority property. Um, we have an easement. Um, something was built on the easement. We have an agreement to put in an easement that doesn't have a building on it and give up the.
I'll, I'll move that one.
Okay?
Second.
Kathy, I, I think this probably needs a little bit of explanation.
Sure, I, I will, I will speak on this one.
Thank you.
Article sixteen um corrects um an under budgeting of legal expenses. Um, Becky, sure.
I'll second.
No, I'll.
I'll have to speak to it.
Okay.
And will, will Becky speak to it as well?
Well, sure.
For sure, yeah, I'll, I'll give a little some, I'll.
Doesn't, doesn't need much.
I'm sorry?
No.
Probably thirty.
Another school.
The next article is seventeen. Um, we, the town will appropriate three hundred thousand dollars to all best. Um, John?
Okay, I will take that. We need to speak to that? That's pretty much a.
I'll second.
A bookkeeping activity.
Yeah, there's, there is a, there's a letter in the financial report you could develop to.
Okay, all right, I will.
There hasn't, there hasn't been any discussion of that in years, so I think you can.
Right. Fine.
I'll second that.
Okay, so John and Becky. Um. For seventeen, eighteen um is the revolving funds um for supportive health and um the Parkinson's.
That's a standard one.
That's a very, that's a pretty personal, personal. Um, so I'll, I'll move it. Anybody willing to second? I'm gonna be. Article nineteen is to remove specific language from our board of health regulations about tobacco so that they can rely on the state recommendations.
Sure.
Becky? Brian? Article twenty, um this is a citizen's petition article. Um, the intention is to allow advertising on school property and on county property under the controls of town, in the case of town property and the school, in the case of school property. The intention is to be able to raise money for um sports teams and athletic department. Um, I am sure that, that um Donna will make that motion.
Alan, do you know if this, Donna has a person to second that one? I, I don't know if she does.
I'll second it. We have not taken a position on it. And it's a slightly complicated situation because we've not been allowing um paid advertising on Sweeney Field for some years. And nobody's noticed, and the building inspector, he said it was sort of okay.
He tr- he treated it as a temporary.
Yeah, it's seasonal.
Yeah, well, there are all, but.
But it's still off premise, I.
It's, yeah, and it, this is, the advertising on Hyland Field will be very busy.
This has, has um the school committee.
The school committee is looking at their policy to, to look, they, they will need to change their policy in order to do this, but they have their policy to, has it on their schedule.
And they are.
They, they, the committee was generally in favor of this um as a way of, of raising money for the athletic teams.
I have a problem, I think it's just like selling name and rights and just doing, I'll sell anything if it helps. Call this, you know, song, this is Tom Hall.
We start selling jerseys.
Yeah.
With.
Guys, um, is there a motion to recommend this article?
Some of.
Second.
Discussion. Becky?
You need some cells. I mean.
Yeah.
Yes.
Kathy answers, yes?
None, yes.
Okay. And Article twenty one is a housekeeping article, which we will probably vote to pass over. Um, I, if, if it has to be moved, I'll move it.
It's typically going to be you and Sarah.
Yep. Okay. And the next on the ballot, the next issue is, are the ballot questions? And we sound.
A slightly revised version, passed out on the tables, um, just some minor wordsmithing, but it's just slightly different than what I sent out earlier. Um, the titles for each one are a little clearer, so the, the first one because of our special act, any embeddedness over a million dollars requires a ballot approval. And so this relates to Article. It is it? Yeah, this relates to Article eight, so this is the second step. The approval process, it has to be approved at the town meeting, the bar on the seven point five five million. We have a town ballot article approving the same. And then question two says if, if we've approved the borrowing, are we approving excluding it from the limitations of Proposition two and a half? So it's a debt exclusion, meaning the dollars needed to raise it are outside the limits of Prop two and a half. So question one is because of our special act, even over a million, that's a valid. Question two is the debt exclusion approval for that borrowing, question one. And then question three is a, is a separate type of exclusion. It's a capital expenditure exclusion which is being proposed to pay for our share of the feasibility study, the school feasibility study. So it's raising six hundred sixty thousand as our share of that study. And then this tied back to question, uh, what, team? No, it's not, question twelve. Um, so again, question, Article twelve, there's two parts, the one at the town meeting, and then a follow-up question at the ballot. Seeking permission to have a, that's a capital expenditure exclusion, again, that's six hundred sixty. Taxes to raise that money are outside of the limits of two and a half.
And, and where's that money coming from?
The six sixty would be basically a, a, sorry, a tax, it'd be one time.
Okay, so that's.
Increase, just over two percentage points.
That's not coming out of free cash or anything, that's gonna be a calculation that the assessment will make up.
Correct.
Procedural question, so because these are ballot questions what's the deadline for finalizing the ballot?
So these, these ballot questions have to finalize this evening.
Okay.
And then they go to it's town clerk who will add these to the um officer election ballot.
The reason for my question was, what happens if the citizens do not approve areas of the budget and these exclusions?
So these are, these are just moot. The results, if people bother to vote, it doesn't count, so it's not void if it's not approved at town meeting.
Okay.
It, it would still appear because of the.
Here we are, it'll be confused.
So you have to do the ballot questions thirty-five days ahead of the, of the election, so by moving, that's the one disadvantage of moving town meeting a little later.
Yep.
But it's a lot of towns do it this way.
Okay. Okay. Um, we, we need to vote.
So most of the ballot questions.
Okay.
Some of.
Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Answered this?
Yes.
That's okay. Okay. Um.
You got this done in twenty minutes, so.
Yeah. I know. Um. The next article um item on our agenda are quarterly reviews for the police chief, the fire chief, and the town administrator. And I'm going to recommend that we delay the town administrator um because, so that the people who don't have to be here till the end can go home eventually. Um.
Yeah, I don't mean, I don't mind if you want to take me out of order and get everyone else out.
Yeah.
That's fine with me, so. A lot of people outside.
Oh, okay.
We probably ought to do number.
Why don't, why don't we move to uh, number three, which is the police um comfort dog um question.
Proposal.
Yeah. Proposal.
Sure, I, I, yeah, or we can do the penning first, whichever.
Yeah, I think.
Do the penning first.
Family associated activity.
Oh, 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 I was thinking the people were, the people who were going to be talking about the dog, but no, this is.
Maybe a light over.
Let's.
Might be a slight wave left.
Let's, let's take the penning first.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, thank you, sorry.
You guys all ready? They're gonna take it ahead of time.
Well, come on in.
We'll do it as a walk-in, bring that, bring in your.
All right. Let's see.
So I would like to introduce you guys to the, I want to say the newest members of the department, but they're returning, uh, but we'll start with the newest. Uh, Mike Going is a career firefighter, he just graduated the academy about a month ago. He comes with a background of uh being a medic for over a decade, uh, so he can go on pre-hospital EMS experience. Uh, and then next up, Rick Curran, uh, he's returning qualified firefighter, lives in town. And he's also an EMT. And then we have Dylan Walnewitz, uh, who is also a returning qualified firefighter, um, and he lives uh in Magnolia. And then we have Mark Bruno, who's a new qualified firefighter, he's also a career lieutenant paramedic with the Amesbury Fire Department. I can tell you that the call department has been successful already, uh, just in the last couple of days, every one of these guys have done calls. So it's, it's worked out very well. Um, so I'll have Mark come up first and then have Mark's uh family come on in. So Mark's wife Roseanne and his two sons, Anthony and Dante. You can't go, stand right up and go right up and try, there you go. Brian, I'm just sticking into his chest.
Could we, could we move the people in back so that, so that
they can see the person being pinned?
Yeah.
Get him a couple of, in the throng, you should.
I'm just waiting.
Yep. Do you have one? Don't worry, it's still blood, we got some.
One, two.
You got a helping?
Sorry. And a few.
Now's the time to do it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We'll do, uh, Mike Going. And then since he's on duty.
Lieutenant Cavender is gonna do his penning and not cause any damage.
No problem.
It's not as easy as the.
You guys didn't practice this early?
All right, thank you, Tim.
And then Dylan, uh, his girlfriend Ashley is going to do the penning. They did practice this in the hallway. Yep.
More pressure.
It's worried, everyone's watching.
Dylan, you graduated school here, right?
Yes. Oh.
My daughter was in class with you, Betsy James.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Hundred years ago.
Oh, no, he's not.
Thank you.
And then. And we have Jocelyn and Griffin. You guys practiced? He's got, he's got the new.
The new recruit coming on.
Yeah. And just to be on record, Phil Sacala, who also is a returning uh qualified firefighter, he's um on the job and he works opposite shifts than everybody else, so it was like her and Cass trying. We congratulate him as well.
Yes. We're now gonna pack it for comfort dogs team. Yes.
Hi.
Everybody looks.
I just wanna say that I think it was brilliant, the picture of the.
I know, so I can say no to a coupon. Do you need the?
Um, I'm not actually, I can give you. You logged in to the, what, meeting?
Um.
So you can be the login and you can do it yourself, or you can give it to.
I don't know. So if I log, I don't think I have Zoom on my, did Mark send you the PowerPoint?
So it did.
It's in the package, right? You have access to the package, so.
Yeah, I said.
So what are, what are we, skip the PowerPoints and just.
We have it, we have it.
You guys have it, okay?
Yeah, they have, so they can.
All right, that is, is this where you want me, or?
We spot.
Right, okay.
So, I'm Lieutenant McCoy, and um so I'll give you a brief background on how this came about. Um, two freshman students did a short presentation for myself and. Did a short presentation for myself and the chief about the benefits of having a comfort dog. Um, in the school and in the community. So that kinda snowballed into us looking around, other departments in the area have comfort dogs. And, um, it kinda took off. So the benefits of having a comfort dog means, um. Mental health and anxiety of school age kids, but also would benefit the police and the fire. Uh, going through, um, traumatic events, any other crisis that we may come upon, or just everyday. Stuff that happens within the police and the fire department. So, um.
I, I, I guess since we've read this presentation and we're running very slow.
Yeah.
You, you don't have to read back to us.
All right.
Okay, most of us are literate. All right, so other questions?
I, I, I do have comment and question, first of all, I love that the students brought this.
Yeah.
To you all. And, um. Approaching the SRO, which is always reinforces what a good. Function and job you have and do over there. So first of all, thank you, and I love that the kids brought that, young adults brought that forward. One question is, what about any animal allergies? If is, how does that? Because the dog that is being looked at. It's not hypoallergenic, absolutely one I wanna adopt as well, but, um. So how do you all work with that?
Um, I think that is going to be something, hopefully, the middle school and high school aged. Kids, young adults, know that going into a situation. Um, and then it would be put out to the elementary schools, kind of like, um. Nowadays, they do it where you can't take their photo and post it on social media and things like that. So it would be, um, some sort of Google form where parents can say. My child in room X has an allergy, and we would just skip that room, or the. I, I can actually speak to that. Because I was at the school committee meeting when they discussed this, they currently have a policy of no dogs.
Correct, so that.
And they need to change that policy, and they were discussing ways that the school policy would isolate some rooms. And still allow the dog to be available to kids who are not allergic.
So the school, school committee is in favor of this.
The school committee is generally in favor of, is, is in favor of this, I don't know that they voted exactly that they wanted it. But they are taking it on as a policy question.
Just to add to that, we are meeting with the school committee mid-May.
May twenty first.
Yeah, May twenty first. And then another example is that, um. During the summer playground, we had aced the comfort dog from Gloucester come. A bunch of kids, and the kids that knew they were allergic to the animal just stayed away.
Thank you. Oh, John.
Yeah, let's have a question, so the portfolio of activities, as I read the explanation here, is a little broader than just the school. Obviously, you got community, but you're also, I see elder affairs support. Now, I assume that's not something that's, you've really been involved with, certainly not with the dog, I guess.
No.
So what are your plans?
Yeah, so I've spoken there to Hammond, Hammond, she's in full support of this, and, um. Love the idea of having a comfort dog, maybe come to the council on aging and.
The community room.
The community room at the Plains and Newport Park.
Okay, so I assume a schedule will kinda get put together.
Yeah.
For all of this stuff, not only the school, but everything else, it'll be a very busy talk.
Yes.
So that's, uh, that's, that's, that's great. Well, and, and will there be like, uh, say, a monthly report of all of the activities, I mean, usually that's part of policing anyway. To know what you've done and how things are going, you're not, your baseline is, well, it's zero now.
Yes, and then there'll be a social media, a lot of social media will be happening, the dog will have its own Instagram. A lot of Facebook stuff, own patches, everything.
Becky. I had another question, which jogged my memory when, when you said that. As the SRO, you have a school resource officer, you have, um, a schedule over there. And the dog would be with you and only you as, as the handler.
Correct.
So, um. How, how would that schedule work in with other potential uses for the comfort dog?
Um, so it is a police dog, not just a school dog. Um, it will accompany me to the school, but at the end of the day, it is still a police function. So if there was some sort of incident where she was needed, then we would, you know, leave the school and. Head over to whatever was happening.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Um, I look at all the time. Having had some recent experience, um, I think you may underestimate the vet costs. So when I spoke to Dr. Lamb, I asked him to give me an estimate. Okay. Cause we were putting together a proposal, he, however, then was leaving for Africa. So, um, he, I think, was giving me the rough estimate cost of. Whether or not some of his services would be volunteered, I'm not sure, but the cost he gave me is where we came up with that. And I suspect that. Will the dog be spayed when you get her? I do not believe so, however, that will be happening, so actually, I know that she is not, so. Okay. That will be something that will. Oh, okay, um, do you have extra funds in case? Yes. Okay, that's, I don't wanna have this dog. Yes, and then have to figure it out after the fact, we do have money to cover, we have applied for grants. Um, and then we will be doing fundraising. Excellent, thank you.
Question, actually, one question, I met with the officers, um, last week on this to go over some of the numbers. I forgot to ask about insurance, there is such a thing as pet health insurance.
There is, yes.
And I was wondering if you had discussed that with other departments, do they have health insurance for their comfort dogs?
Some other departments do, they use Trupanion or other ones. Um, us as a department hasn't necessarily covered that basis, but. Um, usually it's, I believe, like forty or fifty dollars a month if we were to get it now, it's a. So that could be something, I think, once the fundraising starts and we do come and figure out the grant money and. Then that's something we can explore then.
Another question? Yes, just, uh, so right now, this dog is like, it's a family dog staying with you, right?
It is, yes. Staying with me, but not like family in there.
I mean, not.
Yes, it is staying with me.
It's staying with you, so your schedule is kind of the dog's schedule. Is there, is there another person that really man, will be around to manage the dog when you say you're on vacation or out for whatever the reason is, or it's just? It's not a dog day.
Do you want it? Um, so, yeah, that will all be figured out, I, that, the first picture is my daughter and my current. Dog who's one, um, Rudy. Um, so we use a boarding service, Canine Edge out of Danvers. Um, where we board my dog if we were to say go to Florida or somewhere. So I've already spoken to them, they would be willing to board if need be. Um, I don't have any trips planned in the near future, um, but that is something, or I could give it to one of the other officers. Like Lieutenant McCoy, um, but I would probably board her before I would just give that responsibility. To somebody, you know, that isn't like trained with dogs.
Okay.
And we, we do have other officers that have volunteered to house a dog and be back.
They say that, but then it may change, so.
I know, I know where it's gonna be, thirty one months.
Well, his wife already volunteered.
Oh, she's been ready for another dog.
Be like a grandpa for the dog, and the dog back for the dog.
I am slightly concerned that the school policy process is fairly slow. So I, I assume that there'll be some training for the dogs, and so you wouldn't expect the dog to be in the school until September-ish. Um, so the meeting for the school committee is May twenty first, so then, once they were to approve it, we still would have. Like three weeks left of school. So if they say yes, then we can move forward and see how that looks. Um, the training that she and I would go to is in July. So that's the two weeks right after the Fourth of July, July eighth and twelfth, I believe. Um, but then, yes, we would start full time in September. Other, any questions?
I guess just specifically or logistically, is there something specific you need from us tonight to approve? Or is it just a general consensus from us that we support what you're, what you're doing?
I think we just need your final approval.
Okay.
Just a little bullet.
I think if you give your final approval, it needs to be contingent on the school.
School, right. So that's why I'm wondering the timing.
We could wait until the final approval.
Well. I'm worrying about a four and a half month old dog who is homeless. Right, correct. However, if the school committee were to say no, there is officers who would like. We put together this working group, there are officers who would like to then step into this role. And we can, or would transition the dog to one of those, cause again, it isn't a school. It's not exclusively a school dog. Correct, it belongs to the police department in the town, so. My, my concern is not that the school committee will turn it down, but that they will have a policy, and then the policy will require some. Period of time to. Um, be approved, the policy is presented, and I, they may take two meetings to approve. It's just.
For modification, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna make sure that there is some plan, so that this dog isn't.
Wandering the streets.
Lonely and crying.
Yes.
Um, so if.
Well, in that case, we can paint spikes on it and keep.
Okay, so, so. If the, if the school committee says no, then I think we don't want to go ahead with this, I think. Or, or do it.
Well, it's, again, it's not just for the school purposes, and I. I like the idea of a comfort dog. For other purposes as well, I think.
I would ask. Uh, okay, either chief, have there been think, times in the past you, you think the comfort dog would help in any situation?
Absolutely, I, I think it'd be a huge benefit to the public safety personnel.
Yeah, so I. I, um, I mean, literally, every college, every school has these, this is, this is not a new thing. So I definitely support it, I just would like a little clarity, I'm a little uncomfortable with the, oh, the dog can go here. What's the plan if the school says no, who's gonna be the handler, where, where is this dog gonna be, where is its home? Um, I just would, we're all concerned about making sure the dog itself is well cared for and not passed around like a, you know, a hot potato, so. I just want a little more clarity as to if the school says no, I still support bringing in the comfort dog, but. Who's gonna be the mommy and daddy?
So we have Officer Seidel is our backup handler, so if it, school doesn't approve it, Officer Seidel has. Volunteered to be the second handler.
Is there a motion, um, to endorse the addition of a comfort dog? Becky.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Anne says yes.
John says yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for being.
Does she have a name?
Um, I had told the students that came up with the proposal, and they like the name Daisy.
Dog come up with the name.
Someone like to put in there two seconds.
Name it Bella for short, but name it after our belt, the our belt.
Daisy, really?
Thank you, thank you very much.
I have a dog named Bracey, so what am I talking?
Okay, reverting to our agenda. Um, we have the quarterly review for the police chief.
We have my memo.
Yes, thank you.
As we know, accreditation is, uh, on our forefront, the June mark, and then, uh. October actual rea- reaccreditation, we're working on the parking enforcement, as we've talked about in the past. Um, if you see the sticks or the, uh, those flags on Beach Street where the sticks will go. They were put out there last week by DBW. Uh, let's see, emergency management, we had a successful shelter drill, uh, there's a video and a, uh, press release coming out. Probably tomorrow on, on the, uh, actual drill itself. Uh, we're working with MAPC, uh, when six other, uh, local communities on a regional shelter plan, a good college has been designated the, uh. Uh, a possible low, location for that, um, so we're working on that. And then we're having a tabletop exercise for a category three hurricane coming through Cape Van, uh, the tentative date's May twentieth, so. I'll be sending out an invite for everyone, uh, that would want to attend. And you heard about the comfort dog? Right, my, nice picture. And then we're on to the budget.
Really unfair.
And then we're on to the budget, and then with last quarter, we had some staffing issues with about twenty-three point five percent of our workforce out. Either on light duty or, uh, for other reasons. And we've been transitioning, trying to save a little overtime into the safe lobbies, and that's been working out, uh, really well. Mark's been managing that with, uh, with the schedule. And in conclusion, the, I'm still sitting on the Mass Chief School Safety Committee. Um, the, obviously, uh, emergency preparedness is the top priority for the town, for me, and, um. Going to the chief's legal update. Uh, in, uh, well, we went to the chief's legal update in April, and then I'm going to the IACP conference again in. October, and it's actually held in Boston this year.
Can, can you speak just a little bit without going into any identifiable detail about the use of the safe lobby?
So the safe lobby was when, uh, there's no one in the station, and we have two offices on the street, and that was, uh. So typically, we have three people working, we have one officer in the station, uh, from eight AM to, uh, midnight. But due to the staffing shortages, we've been running the safe lobby, and when people come in, they can talk to the regional dispatch through the, uh. Through the intercom system that's set up.
Well, people actually have been coming in.
People have been coming in and using it, yeah. It's been working out really well.
So have you gotten positive feedback from the residents who are the people who have used?
Yeah, I mean, I haven't heard any complaints, so that's a good thing. Yeah, I would have heard.
So I, I just wanna say, I, I appreciate the progress on the parking enforcement, that's been a really tough nut to crack, and I, I hope this. Pilot will bear, uh, fruit. Um, also, the, the tabletop that you're, um, that, that may happen in May, is that a multi-town tabletop?
So it's gonna be all the Cape Van communities.
So the four Cape Van.
Four Cape Van communities, yeah, and I have a special guest that will, people will be surprised to see, hopefully, he'll be able to make it.
Okay, and so it's gonna, who, is MAPC running this?
MAPC is, yeah, we have a, uh, planning meeting on Friday, so MAPC will host it and facilitate all.
With, with Mema.
With, with Mema, yeah.
Okay. Awesome, look forward to that.
I just have one question, I wanna just, uh, ensure that, uh, with the new acting sticks coming up. We have made, uh, allowances for the, uh, moving to parking spaces further up Beach Street, and there'll be a crosswalk.
Yes, yes, for the, the new crosswalk, yes.
That, that reminds me. That that reminds me, I'm sorry, back up on the the parking stick. Um, the one that's up that will be put in front of Town Hall for the no parking zone. And you know, was it the Fire Hydrant or the? Will DPW be marking the?
Yes. Parking. I've been working with Sean Johnson on sites.
Okay, but on the street, here's where the, okay, so there's no, that's awesome.
Yeah, but again, they're actually going to do some painting, I think, out back.
Awesome. Fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, just just a question to go back. See, but your staffing has been a challenge over the last quarter. And so you've you've taken some time from the safe lobby, which, as I recall, normally it's uh, you you have three folks around all the time. So now you've been doing some midnight to eight AM with just uh.
Well, midnight to eight AM is constantly too.
It's constantly too, but it's been hours before that. Oh, in the day, alright.
Down to two.
So that's interesting. I I could understand dropping down to eight PM to midnight, but you've gone even during the day.
Even during the day, yeah.
Probably isn't anybody showing up at eight PM to midnight very often.
Sometimes they're out, but yeah.
That's pretty rare.
It 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 is difficult not having someone in the station during the day. Because the phone rings con- constantly. They transferring calls down to us.
Yeah, okay.
Because they, you know, unable to provide the information.
Alright, that's good. So so you're getting some information about how the how the safe lobby would work when there's stuff going on. And it's it seems to be working.
And I will say, uh, with, we had an accident over the weekend. We transitioned the off, the third officer from the safe lobby to the accident. So that extra pair of hands is 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 vital in those situations.
Right, right. Okay, well, I'm I'm glad to get that information. And but you're still, even even by taking some of that time from the safe lobby, you're struggling with the the budget.
Pretty much.
Because of the shortage.
One in the academies, two.
Given 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 the the structure we've got with staffing, et cetera, safe lobby becomes a kind of a pressure relief.
Yeah.
At that situation, that's great.
As I recall, that was part of the last year's proposal. Staffing and the added officer was to have that flexibility to leave.
Yeah.
So it's working.
In that instance, but in some instances, I mean, you intentionally said, we got nobody here.
Yeah.
Because they only got two people. And so that's fine. But you're right, there are instances where that third person is.
And even so though, your percentages are fairly similar to last year.
Yeah, they are.
One last question. Is there anything else you need from the board?
Uh, not right now. I think everything's running pretty smooth and thank you for the approval for the for the dog. I think that's going to be a huge asset to us.
Look forward to meeting.
Thank you.
You again.
Me again. So I've actually gotten some great feedback from everybody on the um, monthly update. So I think everyone's kind of up to speed to uh, where we're standing currently. Uh, over the last quarter, some of the bigger, um, you know, notable things is car two medic twos in service, um, which allows us to keep our ambulance in town, uh, if it's paramedics request out of town. Uh, did go over to help Gloucester cover during one of their funerals for one of their firefighters recently, so that was a big help. Uh, went out to Minnesota with two other uh, staff members to do the final inspection of the ladder truck. Uh, that went very well. It's now in Indianapolis at a big conference and then it's going to make it start making its way east and we should have it by July one.
July one is much better than July five.
Right.
They 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 uh, promised, but they said they were.
Yeah, they spotted a dog on it.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, software upgrades completed. Um, you know, my firefighter going graduate the academy, the call firefighters are working out exceptionally well. Um, I it's, I'm, I have to eat crow. I didn't think it was going to work as well as it did. And um, they've been um, training side by side with the career staff, so everything is working flawlessly. Uh, during the weekends, when we're more shorthanded than others, uh, they show up. They show up at one AM, um, so it's it's really, really working.
How many do we have now?
We have four, yeah.
Any thoughts about expanding that?
So we have in the budget uh, for July to do another four. Um, I think eight would be a good number. It's just finding the right candidate within the right um, mileage to really feel like, because all these guys look close. Uh, the two career guys, Phil and uh, Mark, they work opposite shifts. So that means the ones at their career job, the other ones usually around, so you know, it works out very, very well. Um, I can't say enough about uh, the interagency or interdepartmental uh, work with the uh, police department, the harbor master. Um, everything is working awesome. Our joint drills, our joint trainings, um, you know, working with Todd on a regular basis. It's easy. Uh, it works really, really well. Uh, we recently did the DEP boat drill, uh, and was there as well. Um, it ran really well. Uh, it was multi-agency drill, uh, simulating an oil spill in the harbor. We went through some classroom, reviewed equipment, um, so that was really fun. We did an active shooter drill this weekend uh, with uh, the police, Essex Police and Fire. Uh, that went really well um, as well. So we've been doing a lot of uh, co-training and it just makes us stronger as a community. Uh, last year or towards the end of last year, we've uh, got so far about twenty thousand dollars in grants. I've applied for five additional grants, which you guys saw in the monthly update. And other than that, uh, training that's been going on, we've been doing firefighter training just to get the call firefighters speeding with our equipment. And we've been doing some EMS simulation training um, as well, so everything's going well. Uh, Lieutenant Cavender, who was here this evening, he was on light duty for a little while, so we were able to um, leverage that to send him to a command class while he was on light duty. So he took a train, the trainer class, so all the officers will be trained in it coming up. And then I will kind of go through the staff as well. So everybody in Essex County is um, starting to transition to a different type of incident command. Uh, they're finally teaching old dogs new tricks and everyone's kind of jumping on board with it. So it's um, it's going to be kind of a regional approach, so it's going to work out well. Uh, budget wise, everything is going as good as it can be. Um, I think we're in a good spot. Probably in a month from now, I have a better idea of what the forecast is for end of May uh, and June. But so far, I've met with Greg a few times and um, it's looking better than years past, so.
I had a question on the, uh, first of all, thank you. I I think it's going great. I'm really pleased about the call firefighters. And thank you for being open-minded enough to to pursue it, because that's that's really great to see. I had a question about the safer grant that is that you're going after for the three-year. Labor coverage. Is that to over hire in the anticipation of retirements?
Yes.
Okay.
So that is to over hire, over hire, and then during that time, I could also use that as a study period to see some different services we might be able to offer um, and recoup some revenue. So it'll give us a good trial uh, for that's free of cost, basically.
Because it's always touchy if someone is applying for a job and, oh, we only get money for three years, right? But if you're over hiring with the.
Yeah, we know.
Expected attrition, that's a good strategy. Okay, thank you.
So to that end, the safer folks know that that's a strategy that a lot of, a lot of departments will use?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. So, you know, when I did the safer grant, I was upfront and said during, you know, it's going to be used for uh, to upstaff. During that upstaffing, we'll try some different um, sharing of resources. And then I did say that I'm going to put it in my budget to uh, for going forward, but obviously, there's no promises that were given.
Okay, alright, I'm just curious. That was.
Right, I mean, but if you're overstaffing.
Yep.
That's typically a temporary thing.
Yeah.
Because we're not talking about increasing head count permanently, but overstaffing for a short period of time to ease out, uh, you know, a senior.
Yeah.
Person, that that makes totally sense.
Which is what we want to do with transitioning.
Just, you mentioned a um, the first time was involved with a regional ambulance?
Yeah, so um, I think Greg and I are going to be attending a meeting uh, last Friday, uh, first Friday in May, um, where the Cape Town community is going to get together, look at the uh, EMS services, uh, see what each community is providing, how we can help each other and see if there's a a different type of approach. Um, and kind of see where the shortfalls are. I think we're personally in a good spot. But you know, if we can leverage certain things and and offer certain things, you know, I think there's some good conversations to be had, certainly.
Same question. Is there anything else that we can do for you?
No, I think everything's going well. Um, obviously, the one thing I've brought up a couple of times concerned about was the overtime. Um, but um, you know, I think you you're kind of seeing, we've curtailed it as much as possible uh, contractually. Um, so it is what it is. Um, we do have a little cost savings. We had one firefighter leave that we weren't anticipating, so we do have some base salary that we can kind of shift around. So that's why I don't really know what those numbers are going to be until probably a month from now, I'll have a better idea.
With the with the um, harbor drill?
Yep.
Did you have people watching?
It was actually, we had a decent amount.
I was there, Tiffany was there.
Well, I wish I, I wish I were here to be there, but um, did you get any calls or um, people concerned about what was going on?
No, I think, you know, we had put uh, some stuff out on social media. We had some um, signs up that said we are training, um, so. I think it actually went pretty well. There's some, a lot of people over at Reed's Park that were watching and, you know. And the rain held off for the most part, so.
Uh, question, just kind of remind me, maybe maybe everyone, where are you with all of the training for every everyone in the department? Where they're away for several weeks, which was always always putting pressure on your.
So for the academy training?
Yeah, no, and the medical training, I guess most of that is weekends, but.
So the medical training, actually, we're fortunate enough that we could do a lot of it in-house.
Okay.
Um, so because I own a medical training company, so it's because of ethics issues, we can't charge. So the the town gets free sim labs and things like that, uh, so it actually works out pretty well. Uh, for the fire academy, everyone's academy trained that we have of the um, full-time spot that we advertised for, we had eleven applicants, uh, three of which were academy-trained paramedics from other departments. Uh, one has since backed out and he's going to a different department, but we have um, interview scheduled. Uh, Brian's helping us and then Tom uh, Parkinson from the finance committee is helping on the interview uh, panel. And we're doing that Thursday and Friday. So uh, with any luck, um, you know, depending on how those interviews go, they were already trained firefighter, paramedics on that um, list, so we're doing very well on that accord.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Very nice to have you join us. Okay, um. Food truck. This is, we've agreed already that that there will be a food truck, the question is just where to put it. And we have two, at least two things in a packet. One is a picture of where a hundred and fifty feet is. And um, the other is a recognition from our town clerk. And um, it says, oh, and it doesn't get anywhere. Oh. The food truck arrive, I believe the food truck would arrive at at four o'clock. Yes, four to eight, so four four to eight, so it's after the school is empty.
And just just to name an address.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, Therese Mallon, forty-two Mascanello Street.
Where would you prefer to see the truck?
I'd like to see it as close to.
Let me, let me, let me actually make this a little easier for you. Uh, you have it, okay, good, yeah, great.
So looking at the um, in the inner circle, this is whatever, you know, a hundred and forty-nine point one. The parking spaces that are next to the tennis courts that are outside of that.
Yeah.
Circle of the big circle. Um, I think that would be a great place to, a- any spot there. Would be, I just want it to be visible, more visible than it was for the primary. And yeah, I mean, we'll have a lot more light. It'll still be eight o'clock. We still have sunlight. But I think just is closer to uh, the, you know.
I saw a reference somewhere to a tennis tournament.
I think there's a tennis match that afternoon.
Okay.
So that'll just be more cars and more people.
So it would, if if wherever it is.
Co- coining off early.
Right.
Be necessary.
Captain Todd did that for us in March.
Anyone have? Um, so.
That's in line with what Diane was saying, right? She just wants it outside of that one hundred and fifty feet. She doesn't necessarily need it to be across the street.
Okay, okay. Can you show it?
So I I so you're proposing, take one of those parking slots, the first parking slot in that row of parking places?
Probably.
Outside, yeah, well, look, yes.
Two part is parking spot.
Okay.
Yeah.
For the truck and one for customers, basically.
Yeah, if it's on the, yeah, I guess then you can do that.
Yeah. And it being a town, I mean, the whole idea is to encourage voter turnout. I don't think that we're going to get a hundred percent voter turnout in May. It would be lovely if we did, but now. I think there'll be lots of empty parking sites, even with tennis.
Yeah.
Fine, so let me propose that you and Chief Fitzgerald um, work with this diagram um, and find a place that's outside the circle and close enough and make sure that it gets blocked off so that we don't have to tell people from voting to move their carts.
Okay.
That's acceptable, do you think? Okay.
Thank you.
So move to a food parking outside of one hundred and fifty foot circle.
Second.
Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Diane says yes.
Sean, yes.
Okay.
And I will say, it was delicious last time.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And thank you for persisting through all of this. Pardon me?
Same grilled cheese.
The same truck melt, yeah.
Lots of options.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, um. Now, resident morning holder parking. Correspondence, um, I. Greg, can can you just remind me what we currently have?
Right, so um, during the course of the winter, you've had many conversations about parking and the parking policies. Um, one of the changes you discussed and then ultimately approved was um, making a couple of changes to the to the morning holder policy for non for non-residents. Um, one was increase the price um, for the season. The second area concerned overnight parking. And because it's a limited resource, particularly here behind Town Hall, um, your thinking was that we needed to not take up spaces for multiple nights in a row for overnight parking. And to limit the use of this area for morning holders to um, daytime use. You said eight to eight to six in your policy. Realistically, that that means eight until the evening, because we we stopped enforcing at six. Um, you could modify it eight to six to say eight to ten or or something, eight midnight or something. But your your goal was to avoid taking up the few spaces that are here with overnight parking. And instead, make it um, official that overnight parking can take place at tax point. Um, obviously, for people who have a boat here in the inner harbor, parking overnight at tax point requires a bit of jiggling ride and picking up people or whatnot. So we've heard from some of the morning holders um, that that is difficult to to deal with and they want the opportunity to um, to speak to you about it and see if there are um, other options or 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 not. And and to me, the 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 solution means coming up with different areas for parking and I. And and to me, the 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 solution means coming up with different areas for parking and I. I don't know where that could be. Um, it's just such a premium in this area. Um, but if if we could work something out with. I don't know if the Masons or the Legion would be willing to do something behind there. A lot, you know, uh half a dozen spots, I I I'm speculating, I'm I'm thinking out loud. I haven't had that conversation. Um, whether or not you could do something on the weekends at the sewer plant. Again, I'm just trying to think a little creatively on where we might come up with a few more spots if if you wanted to go that route of.
Add along more thing, at the same time that we were doing um changing the parking regulations, we took away seven. Long-term parking spaces from residents at the, at the Norwood.
Right.
Slot. So, this is not that we are specifically targeting. We have tight parking downtown.
Right.
And and we're trying to make the best use of it that we can.
And that was one of my comments as well. I I found it. Unfortunate and insulting that it was, that we were. It was said that we were deliberately targeting specific people, which. Couldn't be more far from the truth. Um, we do have very limited parking. For the residents even. And um. I wondered, um, I know that Manchester Marine offers parking. Um, and that is not just limited to people who have votes there. Um, do we have? Um. What are our liability concerns if we provide parking and there's? Damage to vehicles left. Long-term.
That would be for our insurance carrier to bear it out.
Well, that's.
I have a, I have a question, Greg, so.
The way we need to do, give very few exceptions is that we talk it out. And then we go for questions. So as long as we have things to say. Yes, John?
All right, so prior to this change, what was the policy back here with regard to out of town?
So, so mooring holders with with those parking passes were allowed to.
With placards?
With placards, were allowed to park overnight.
Okay, so before that, and they could park anywhere?
No, it was designated along the uh the seawall here.
Near where it has.
Which uh which has been a challenge and I I know it's come up a couple of times, you know, five years ago.
And then. How many spaces are there? There are eight spaces or something like that.
You've, you've taken a couple.
Yeah, the police department.
We had to in the end, yeah.
Yeah, but those should be the only ones at this point. Okay, so in other words, prior to this. The placards entitled you to essentially kind of unlimited parking so long as it was in those.
Correct.
Eight or ten spaces.
Correct.
And outside of that, the placard didn't give you anything.
So they also work at Damascus.
Well, I I I'm talking about back here.
Okay.
I, may I?
No, no.
Just, just, we will give you a chance.
Okay.
But, and and if that's a question.
It's a question.
Would you, would you, would you? May I accept an answer?
Yeah, you may, just because you probably have used it.
Well, I have, and and I believe in the past.
I'm gonna have.
By Johnson, Wilton, New Hampshire.
Thank you.
Um, I believe in the past there were actually two kinds of parking placards associated with boating. One was for people using the launching ramp that I believe was associated with the spaces along the fence. And as I recall, the parking placard for mooring, non-resident mooring holders last year. It did allow parking in some of the spots behind the town hall, separate from the spots along the fence. Um, the chief is, is.
Diane would know better, but that's not my understanding.
Um, any other comments before I would?
I think the question.
I don't know, maybe the chief can speak to this. I'm going to guess. That with the new smart spec. That you uh park behind Town Hall. Start to fill up with, okay. Uh, so to tie up because people don't want it. Once they realize how that works, okay.
Yeah.
We're gonna hide behind Town Hall.
People who. We're going to a new kind of parking enforcement along Beach Street. So people going to the beach. Will be, their license place will be photographed if they're in place for more than two hours and they'll get a fifty dollar ticket. So people who are going to the beach are going to be going back behind Town Hall. Which means that that space is going to be even more congested, okay?
I have a um, a question. Um. Greg, could you refresh my memory? Approximately, how many non-resident mooring holders? Do we have or what percentage of the mooring holders?
Um, it's over a third.
Over a third.
Yeah.
So.
Thirty-eight percent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so thirty-eight percent of the mooring holders are non-resident. We have only eight spaces in the back. Somehow, all those people find a way to get to their moorings. Without using, on on a sunny July day when almost everybody wants to be in their boat, there's only. What, six or eight spaces out back here with the voting placards? But lots of people are getting to their boats. So I'm trying to understand what other. There, there must be other parking options, right, that people are actively using. To get to their boats if they're not a resident. And I'm curious as to what some of those are.
Yeah, well, I can probably comment because I I was trying to do the math here. We sell eighty placards. Now, if that's a third of the moorings, that's a couple of hundred moorings, more than that, it's two hundred and fifty. Anybody who belongs to Manchester Yacht Club, anybody out in Tux Point doesn't get a ma- placard. You can park pretty much anywhere, you can go out in your boat, nobody asks questions.
So some, some boats who who use the Tux Point star, access their boats, they will have a placard and park there.
Do they need one?
Yes.
Yes.
Technically, for Manchester, the.
Who's walking around out there checking? I understand overnight.
For overnight.
I'm talking about just for the day.
During the day, it's.
Anybody shows up.
It's just so because.
That's the point, that's the point I made, all right? So I I think that if I were to look at those eighty placards, the vast majority of these people are right here. Because they, they need a, they need access somehow. So I I think that's what's going on. So when you say, you know, thirty-eight percent, and I I I believe that. A big chunk of them are not necessarily here. But, um, it's the ones here, I think that.
Um, I.
Betsy?
Hi, um, Betsy.
Yeah.
Betsy Ware, two sixty-two Witchshot Road, South Berwick, Maine. Good to see you all and thank you for having this discussion. Um, I'm representing my partner, Robert Levinson, me as non-resident. Mooring holders and also members of the Manchester Harbor Boat Club. We're also members of the Bakers Island community, but we are not speaking on behalf of the Bakers Island community. Um, I also spent the first forty years of my life here, so, um, my parents owned a house on Walker Road. So, in actuality, the present, the former policy was. A bunch of parking spaces along the wall adjacent to the ramp. And you needed a voting placard at fifty dollars a pop for the voting placard, one placard per mooring holder. That also allowed you to use Tux Point. And there was um parking at Tux Point and you could park overnight for an extended period of time. So, what, on March fourth, the policy changed. To limitation of from eight in the morning till six at night behind the police station along that row. And three nights maximum at Tux Point. So, um. A number of us have some concerns about that. Um, the new policy doubles the price of non-resident parking placards. And it significantly decreases the allowed parking behind the police station. And seriously limits the parking at Tux Point. Now, a number of us go offshore, whether we're fishing or on an island or um elsewhere. And we're away for a month or two. Um, so in actuality, how, how we work the system is that we. Put our boat in the water, we will park a maximum of. A day behind the police station, but if we're going to be longer than a day. We understand that there's a parking problem in the center of town, so we go to Tux Point. Um, so, um, there's a number, so the numbers are. There are six hundred and sixty-five moorings in Manchester Harbor. Of those moorings, four oh three are residents. And the remaining two hundred and sixty-two, which is thirty-eight to forty percent, are non-resident boaters. Um, there were eighty-two placards sold last year. The voter plaquei- placard number indicates that. The two hundred and sixty-five non-residents are basically scrambling around to find other sources parking. Now, a number of us use Manchester Marine, a number of us use Crockers. Um, I don't know where else people use, but um. Both of those facilities, now that they're expanding more, they may be further jammed. Um, in terms of availability of parking. Also, we. Understand what, understandably have to wait for boats to be put in the water so that there's a place to park. So it's always, um, May, June is always kind of a little bit of a scramble um on that. Um, so, the policy is, um. Of this, this recent change, we don't believe, um. Reflects a spirit and an intent of chapter ninety-one, which is the state's law that provides access to all waters of the Commonwealth. So keep in mind that Manchester waters are under the jurisdiction of the town, but the tide waters. Underneath the water are held in public trust by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So that's. So for example, the rotunda, that all of the new docks and things that are going in. Those are all subject to chapter ninety-one license, which requires some form of public access. So some scenarios based on this new change. Some scenarios for non-resident boaters might be. A voter who wants to cruise the coast of Maine for a month and no longer has a location for parking a vehicle in Manchester. They can't get private parking or maybe that's not an option. Um, what option does that voter have? Particularly if private parking isn't available. Um, the fisherman who wants to leave Manchester at four in the morning and return at eight at night. Um, that situation is not a matter of recreational boating, it's a matter of making a living. I don't know, I mean, there used to be a fairly good-sized lobster fleet in town. Um. I don't know what they do for parking. Um, so. And a non-resident voter who wants to travel from Manchester to P-Town for the weekend, for a week of vacation. There's limited parking options. Um, so the three-day parking limit in Tux Point poses certain other issues in that. Um, if there's an event at the Chatterhouse and and at the yacht club at the same time, there's no guarantee of parking. So. You paid for your parking placard, that's the only place you can park for a longer period and you may get iced out of parking. Because there's events there. So, um. That really puts kind of an undue stress on parking at Tux. Um, and maybe it's something that. If there's a voter plaque or if you don't change your policy, the the voting, voting placard could be applied to. The high school parking lot or Memorial School. Um, so. For example, um, in your packets for um the March fourth meeting, there was discussion about um. The fact that Rockport provides remote parking. So that's something that maybe could be considered. Um, now, there was reference earlier tonight to the launch service. Um, with almost forty percent of non-resident boaters. Who use the harbor, harbor, we may have participated in that, but now we don't have any place to park for any type of long. Longer time period than three days. Um. So, it seems like the non-voting community, the non-resident voting community in Manchester. Is being punished for their use of the harbor. Uh, I mean, we pay excise taxes on our boats, we register our vehicle on our boats with the state. We pay mooring fees, we pay dredging fees. Um, the dredging fees we pay every year. So that's a quarter of the dredging fees, I mean, a forty percent of the dredging fees. Um, we use local marine services, we uh support the local economy. Everybody shops at Crosby's and goes to local restaurants. And um, so particularly from April to October, we. We're supporting the local economy um and in other months as well. Um, so I think what Robert and I, our approach would be, would be to ask you to. Revisit your policy on the hours behind town. Uh, the police station and also your period of time that you would allow at Tux Point. Um, potential have, potentially have another remote location for placard parkers. Um, I also think that there would be a group of us who would be willing to. Sit down and try to work out the logistics of all this. Um, because it's. You have a number of chapter ninety-one licenses, you have a certain, the town has a certain obligation to make. The harbor and make the waters accessible. So, um, and we're more than willing to work with you on that. So I thank you for the opportunity. Or I'd be.
Uh, I speak of action, that's the one. Uh, I do feel that we're not limiting access to the. The harbor, the water, okay? I mean, we have limited resources. Anyone has access to the water. It's how you get there and what you do with your vehicle when you get there. And I don't, I don't know if that falls in the perjury of chapter ninety-one. But certainly not limiting access to it because we have, we have issues we have to deal with. And so I, that's, I just wanted to make that.
Um, so I do, um, the change that we made to the policy. I did not think that in any way affected commercial fishermen, so I would like clarification. We do, do the commercial fishermen in town, uh, we know who they are. Do they require a boating placard? Because I would not want to in any way, um, Chief Fitzgerald.
So in the past, with the cross of fishermen, Brian and I have identified them and given them a commercial fishing placard. But we decided not to do that this year and they're gonna have to buy a business.
Okay, so they will, they will have a placard that they can use, so their, their business is not negatively impacted by our. So, um, I hope that will alleviate the concern that was, that was raised, we're not impacting commercial fishermen. Um, regarding um scarce resources parking in the downtown. The Town Hall lot is a scarce resource and just general economics, when a resource is is scarce. It, it, the price either goes up or um you have to manage it carefully. Um, and I'm about to make a comment as a non-resident voter in another town. I I don't have a mooring here, my boat is somewhere else. Um, I cannot imagine a scenario where I would leave my car in that other town overnight. I just can't. If I go on a trip and and take a plane, I either get, uh, you know, a car, a ride. To bring me to the airport or I pay thirty-five dollars a day at Logan to park my car. Just expecting to park my car overnight. For essentially a very small free all sea, uh, fee all season, I just, it's a concept that I struggle to understand. Uh, I would never do that. And and my son who uses the boat, he doesn't live in the town where we have our boat. He takes a cab, he takes an Uber, he he bums a ride from a friend. There's ways of getting to our boat. That have nothing to do with that other town providing me with a special spot. So I'm just kind of struggling to understand. Um, this concept as a non-resident voter, so.
Yeah, definitely, of course. Um, and. It's, it's become even.
More of a problem to provide parking for. Anybody, I mean, Tux Point, as you well know. Is routinely packed. On the weekends. When Chowder House. I've had trouble.
Hours before the prom. And by the way, Chief Fitzgerald, that has been handled very well in the past few years. And I appreciate it a lot.
Well, when I go to Tux Point Park, I frequently have a hard time finding a spot. And that's. My personal experience.
I suspect that the number of long-term parkers. Is much smaller. Than the number of people who just come in for the day. There may be some particularly nasty mucky part of Tux Point. My feeling at the moment is that it's getting on toward nine o'clock. We have a hard problem. I would like to hear from everybody who's here to talk about it. And I'd, I'd like to think about it. Yes, our next meeting is in, where we may. I think we will come up with a better solution if we hear from people and think about it, and perhaps you could talk to the Mason, the Legion. About the, and, and the other places that you thought about.
If the school feels like a viable option.
The school might be a great option off-site. It's also a revenue generating opportunity, I mean, there are apps like Spot Hero, where the owner of a parking space can offer it up for a fee. Okay, so the Legion can do that, I don't know if the school can do that, but it's very easy, and that's a revenue generating opportunity for them. Off-site, let's look at all the options we want to, but in the center of town, I just, I, I just. I, I don't understand.
And the other. With the school is. It's not an option when it's in session, right? So that's, you know, it's, it's, and for the people who have boats from May to October.
You know, after the end of June, Sweeney Park. There's, I think that's totally underutilized for parking after the. Now and then, so I, I mean, I'm not. Opposed to finding ops. Okay, I, I wonder if the district will have a problem, that's, they have to make that decision with schools, but that's not, that's not our decision.
I agree, and I agree with.
Town-owned property, the one that comes to mind is Sweeney Park after the Little League season.
But that's something I think we would need to ask input from.
So I, I agree with that. I, with the caveat, though, that even for the off-site parking, because we just took away the long-term parking for residents. I, I don't believe we should be offering a parking spot for anybody for a month. I mean. There's other options out there.
Yeah, Mark Strass, PBMS, long-term, non-resident mooring holder. I think to John's question on how people access the boats, I think the majority go through the yacht club. And when you look at two hundred and sixty people. Two hundred and sixty mooring holders, there's a potential revenue stream there that the town really isn't looking at. And I know parking is a problem, and it's been a problem for a long time, for residents as well as non-residents. So I'm, I'm all on board on that. But. You know, coming up with a long-term plan for parking, maybe, maybe something temporary. At all those places we just mentioned would be great. But. You know, as a long-term plan for non-resident mooring holders. I can throw out some numbers from Manchester Marine. There's a potential revenue stream there. That could. Come through the town, I'd much rather pay the town than Manchester Marine. Or the American Legion or the Yacht Club, and have that water flow through the town. And right into the harbor here to support the waterway, or potentially support parks and recreation. Where the parking may be.
To that point, I think the question still remains is.
Yeah, well, we threw out three ideas.
Again, for a town to generate something, we'd have to be like a Sweeney.
I think tonight we need to gather information, and then we need to think. And we can come back with solutions next time.
Yes, Sir Guy Johnson, I just would ask that you consider more than the previous year's history, go back a few more years. When, for example, we could park at Mascanoma during the day in the center spaces. I'm a day sailor, I'm not an overnight sailor. So right now, it sounds like. Eight out of two hundred and forty-odd. Non-resident mooring holders can park during the day. And the non-resident mooring holders' ability to park. Has been consistently restricted, and the restriction has been increasing over the years. I'm asking that you. Back off a little bit.
And I'd like to say a comment to that, a lot of the. Way the parking. Has been addressed is business owner-driven. And, and they are, they object to longer-term parking. Because they say they feel that.
Where longer term is two, more than two hours.
Exactly, and so that, that is driven a lot by. Local businesses, I just, you know, it's not, not the town saying. There's any one demographic we don't want, it's not about that.
And one other thing, and. The voting, the voting has just. Since COVID, it has just taken off. So now we have those issues again, five or six years ago, there might not have been as many.
For me, it's since nineteen ninety, and I've had a mooring department in Manchester.
The problem is that now we are trying to service more people, so.
I've had a mooring here since.
I need your name.
Oh, Laurel Bavendam, Hampton, Hampshire. I've had a mooring here since nineteen seventy-four. I've been a resident. So I know, you know. The differences and the changes that have occurred through the years. It is. There are different types of boaters. And the day, day boater. Is a different person from the person who may go off and actually cruise. And for those of us who do actually go off and cruise. Tux Point has been the place where we leave our vehicle. But do I leave it there for a month? No. I get somebody to come in and pick it up. It may not be in two days, it may not be in three days, but in four or five days. Somebody comes in and takes my car out of there, just for the safety of it, but it's my responsibility for what happens to my car there. Many of us know you gotta be there before nine o'clock in the morning if you want to park at Muscon, Muscono, is it? Mascanoma, and if you want to go for a day thing.
But now it's only two hours.
Now it's two hours, so you can't use that. The problem is. That there has been a fee increase, which seems like a profit motivated thing for us, a small group of us. Who have difficulty accessing our boats. It's been a long time, and we gladly pay the parking placard, and I would gladly pay the hundred-dollar parking placard. As long as I wasn't going to get ticketed for staying in. At Tux Point for perhaps a week. Instead of the three days. Because it takes me that long just to get to where I want to, to be, the next point, get back and pick up my car. There is. No one sort of boater. No one parking situation works for everyone. But we need to be able to access our boats. It is difficult with the parking of the, at the schools and everything to actually get down to your boat when you're traveling light. Do you hire a taxi? I don't know. I don't know how it works, but. It's, it's making it more difficult. And it feels like. You said that there's no hostility towards out-of-towners, but I have felt. Being an in-town person living here. And being an out-of-towner, I feel the difference.
Thank you. Yes.
I, I don't. My name is Robert Levens, I live in South River, Maine. I live with Betsy, and. She grew up in this town, her father was one of the founding members of the Manchester Harbor Boat Club. I'm not suggesting for one second. That, that. People like us. Object to paying what. It's worth. For us. To have someplace to park, that's not at all the issue. Now, it has been the issue for me, I've been in this, I've been in this harbor since I was born. I've had a mooring, out-of-town mooring holder. Since nineteen ninety-five. In the time that I've. Had a voter plaque, without a town voter, voter plaque. I've never once violated its terms, I know there are people that do. And I knew, I know that's a problem. And. I don't think that that issue is limited to any one single group, the violations. But there are groups that do, I'm sure. So I'm just putting that up for your consideration.
The intent here is not to. Exonerate or. Stick a finger, punch a finger, reality here is we're trying to make more parking available for more out-of-towners. By limiting the extent of the time, taking these parking spots. I think, I mean, I, I. Not that take a chance, but I don't think we're actually trying to accommodate more people by. Specifically, that I would say maybe the day boaters or something like that, but I think by limiting the parking time, we're making it more available to people. That's the intention that I, that I have.
Who's where? Hi, that's you where, South River, Maine. In twenty twenty-two, the Bakers Island Ferry sank. And we were doing a mad scramble to try to figure out. How we could get people on Bakers Island who do not have. Who relied on the ferry to. Get out to their cottages. And it ended up that we have a number of Bakers Island voters in Manchester Harbor, in the inner harbor, and. We talked to, I talked to Greg, and eventually. The school department was very helpful to us in that they allowed us to use. The upper parking lot at the high school for the summer. And there were a couple of weekends or whatever that we couldn't, and I was the, the parking lot monitor. And it actually worked out incredibly well. And we were all very grateful for that opportunity. The. VFW does allow for parking, or they did, and on a daily basis. And you could go in and they were trying to. Do that. The, both marinos also sell parking, so I think the fact that there's two hundred and sixty-two or three. Non-residents and the fact that there's only a sale of eighty-two placards indicates that. People are finding alternatives, but those alternatives. Are likely to get. Eaten up with the expansion of both of those. So, but, but. Parking is available.
I thank all of you for coming. I thank you for your reasoned. Arguments. And for sitting and listening to two hours of stuff that didn't bother you, didn't affect you at all. I, it is now almost exactly nine o'clock. Feel free to email. Any of us, all of us. With suggestions that you've become to you. And we'll put this on our next meeting. And try to get to it a little earlier, and we are. Less likely to get caught in some sort of loop and not get any. Thank you, again. Now we got to go on to. No reservice guidelines.
I would like to stand up for just a moment. Ask them to move their conversation. John? I forgot to move those along. Well, I was trying to listen. Want to give the presenter their full attention.
Thank you.
Because you're good.
I was trying.
That was good.
This is an intractable problem.
This is still a meeting being recorded. No deliberation while those three of us in the room. None of the category, no good deed goes unpunished. Yes.
We have proposals for very public services and justify the difference in the comparison with other towns. John, I can see the red ink on the page.
Yeah, I was doing some math. What'd you say, sixty-two so far in the first quarter?
Sixty-two a quarter.
All right, so that's two hundred and forty-eight, and that's two hundred and forty-eight with limits. Compared to what they used to do, where they did everything. Okay. I'm trying to figure out. I think that still means there's a little bit of, I don't think very many people come, and they've got deeds and wills and that sort of thing. They're probably sitting with an attorney somewhere.
They, they used to, we used to see quite a bit of that. You know, we've been turning people away.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, my, my, my opinion is, is I, I think we should offer it a buck fifty is an irrelevant number that's too hard to. Deal with, nobody's collecting a dollar fifty. And, and you've got these restrictions, I guess my question, what kinds of things, what are the top three things people come in to notarize that's not on this list?
Diane is online.
Diane would be back to answer that.
Hi, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. We notarize a lot of core reforms for people who are getting jobs for some reason. They need to have it notarized. We do a lot of parental. Travel. Permission slips.
That has to be notarized, really?
You're traveling international.
Really?
We also do a lot of. Apartment parental. God, I can't think. I'm so tired. I'm sorry. You know, when a student, college student gets an apartment. The parent has to sign off. We notarize that. Passports. Today I did a patent application. Just a lot of different things, but.
miscellaneous stuff. Okay, okay, but nothing that is super labor intensive. It's just, okay, this is what you need and you, you go through.
Correct. A one, a one pager, yes. The, the real estate deeds and all that other stuff is multiple pages.
That's multiple pages, takes up your time. Okay. All right, I'm in favor of going with it.
Just a question. I thought I saw in the, I can't remember if it was this package or the previous package, that some towns require an appointment. Was, are we considering? Either requesting an appointment or. Having like office hours, notary hours, you know, so that it's a defined period of time so that people aren't just walking in any time to, that could cause a disruption because. You know, normally when you're talking about introducing a new service with. Existing labor. Either people have extra time in their day or you, you run the risk of.
Isn't a new service. This is a restriction of existing service.
Okay, so that. That helps. I thought I understood that because the bank was no longer doing it, that we were seeing an increase.
An uptick.
Yes. Okay. So I guess my point is, I, I do feel we need to bound how many of these we do in some way, shape or form. I don't want to dictate that. But. If we publicize this too much, I fear it could.
Increase.
Increase significantly and become a distraction. So. Like I said, just operationally, good operational management would indicate that you, you set some sort of boundary, either request. Allow for, you know, X number of appointments a day or just office, however you want to do it, but not leave it open ended. So that it could grow outside the capacity of the current team because we don't want to be getting staffing increasing requests. Next year or the year after, because all of a sudden this has become a very popular service.
Well, then it can be revisited.
Right, yeah.
I, I, I'm with Becky on that.
I would advocate for this like hours, you know.
Yeah.
It's, it's. But what is, I'd like to hear what Diane.
Yeah.
Hi, it's me again. That's funny to set hours because everything in my office is so changeable by month, what we do. We do on the website ask for appointments. People. Maybe fifty percent of the time call and ask for an appointment and we usually accommodate them. It's nice to have, know that someone's coming. But a lot of times people just come in. Just like they want to get their resident sticker or they want to buy a DPW sticker, they just come to the office. But if it's just the one. Again, if it's just a basic notary, it's fine. You know, it's just a service and we're only doing it for residents, which is helpful. Then I don't think it will become any more of a problem than it's been.
So I think I hear you saying, Diana, with these new guidelines in place, you think it's manageable.
Until it's not, yeah.
Well, I. Which point we re, revisit.
I agree, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
She said so.
Right.
As long as we don't see a request for an increase in labor to, to, to offer this service.
Yes.
Exactly.
Do you want to motion?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve. The modified notary public services as presented.
Second.
Further discussion. Becky.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Anne says yes.
John says yes.
Okay.
So continuing with Diane, you have the early voting proposal.
Right, yes. And you have more statistics from previous election? I think we've got them.
Right, so the recommendation is to have two consolidated to two days in, in person, early voting. Saturday, May eleventh, from ten to three, and then Thursday, May sixteen, from nine to six. And of course, there's always mail and early voting by mail, or voting by mail, which is always an option as well.
Do you want a motion to approve? So moved. Second, yes. Anne says yes.
John, yes.
Okay. Um, thank you, Diane.
Thank you guys very much.
Yeah.
Do we need to approve the candidates? Or.
No, that's all. You, you'll, you'll see the election warrants at your next meeting.
Okay, fine. Right, and, and the police coverage.
Yeah, we'll include that in your motion.
Okay. I think we are. At the point of the end on updates. And. Becky? Not to know that the planning board hasn't met. Their next meeting is Thursday evening and we have. Our meeting. Yeah. John, Becky ordinarily does support and help, I think, but you were at.
The meeting last Thursday.
The meeting last Thursday.
Okay, and I did in fact review a few of the minutes a couple of days ago of the meeting in January because. There was a lot assumed that you knew going into that meeting. And a lot of it was, of course, course repeated. There were probably about, I'd say, twenty, twenty people there. I think every person from loading place road was there. But they, of course, they have their own water right down the line and Scott Horsley also appeared. On, on our behalf, or I should say the, the water, the town and the Water Task Force's behalf to provide testimony with regard to. Irrigation primarily, the, the use of irrigation. There were a lot of questions that were asked. And I will say that the Board of Health in general took it all in and there had to be forty, fifty questions. I think that at the end of the day. They have a lot to answer to there. Dr. Han was not there and I know he has opinions on, on this particular issue, but he was not in attendance. I will say there was equal concern about testing associated with. With drinking water as there was about irrigation and irrigation being subject to. To restrictions and drought, drought restrictions. There was, there was both of that, but it was. It was apparent that there were an awful lot of questions that should have had some answers that went on, and they, they will go back to the drawing board in that, in that regard. I think, Greg, that there may be a consultant that will help with that. Or there has been some talk about that. The number of questions and the sophistication of what you had to know to answer those questions is not something a layperson is going to be able to do. You really need some help with regard to dealing with that. And there, there was some discussion after the meeting. I chatted with several people and I think it's a prudent approach. That they pull together the questions and issues and work with a consultant. And maybe that's Horsley.
I think he'd be a prime candidate.
He would. He hits the ground running on all of this, would know exactly. How, how to respond. And so that they can have a full picture of what's going on, but there has been, there will be a next meeting when, for May ninth?
May ninth, they said, the next hearing.
Is, is, is the next hearing. I'm not sure that necessarily all of those questions will be answered by then. It's possible. But.
Did someone write down the questions?
Yes. Yes, I, I will say there are two folks that were writing down all of the questions.
Taking copy of notes.
They were. They're keeping up as fast as they could and there were an awful lot of them.
Okay.
But. I don't know how many people showed up at the January meeting, but in person, they were probably twenty to twenty five and online.
Only a similar number.
Similar number.
I was there at the January.
Oh, were you? How many people at that meeting?
Twenty.
Okay.
Yeah.
At least twenty, yeah.
Yeah. So. They really need answers and, and I don't think they got very many answers. I'm, I'm not sure what questions came up in January. From looking at it, there were similar topics that came up, obviously. But the answers were not there.
Brian?
Not much. I see the fence has been, they're not planning on putting any fencing up there, just the.
Pickleball?
Just.
Pickleball.
That's just like a hang the.
I, I saw the work.
No, I don't think there's any, any plan of putting any mesh in there. Just, that was just, I assume.
The bears will be coming in many.
Yeah. Going to share all twelve hundred walk on tags have been sold already this, this month.
How many?
Twelve hundred.
Good pitch, nice.
I don't know what that, is that a lot? I don't know what the number is yearly, year to year.
Little under a third.
Generally, we're up around three, four.
Three, four.
Okay.
I spoke with her and she said it was all seem to be going really well.
There was a bike and ped meeting yesterday that I missed that, but I do know that they plan to, and they coordinated with Alan Wilson, just have a handout. At the town meeting to make residents aware of their committee and. The committee's activities and, you know, website information where they can follow up. So they're trying to do a little community outreach, so you can expect to get a handout on your way into town meeting. Downtown improvement meets tomorrow morning, so.
Let's see. The school. I thought someone died of a reading. The, the big thing is the feasibility study that's coming up. And the first part of that is to nominate a building committee. And. When you're working with MSBA, the building committee is the authority and. They, they can take, they can hear from the school committee and anybody else who wants to talk to them. But it's, it's the building committee, so I would be very interested to see who other than Andy Oldman is going to be on it. The feasibility, it's. It's expensive. It's, it's one point five million dollars. Which is about, I think, certainly at least twice what the high school was and. But that's the way those costs go. They do a lot of work and they're going to have a lot of work for Essex. Because Essex has a good, different, a different good spot for a school. And there will be pressure from people in Essex to move the school. They will actually be. Doing a lot more site work. Pretty low lying where it is now. Pretty low lying. Yeah, it is, exactly. And I think the feasibility process is going to take about a year and a half.
Yes.
At least.
It won't get started really until the fall.
So. And, and then. They go to. They, they will have a schematic at the end, but they, then they need to get. The architect working on full details. So, and then it takes a year and a half to build a school. So, and the. School committee, school committee has been encouraged to draw things out. Because. In six years. Some stuff is going to be coming off and in eight years, more stuff will be coming off and, and. Keeping. So that's. You may hear about. There, the school redoing its budget. And it doesn't, the town votes only on the total amount. We don't vote. We have no control over where they spend their money. So they can redo the internals of their budget and, and that's just up to them. The reason that they're redoing it this time. Is the miserable turf field funding problem. Because they will be taking in. Whatever. A million dollars at least.
For the fields.
From, from the towns reimbursing them for the field work. That will look like revenue. And if they don't redo their budget, it will fall out as what we would call. Free cash. They call E and D.
Access and deficiency.
Has rules about how much, if you have enough excess E and D, you have to give it back to the towns. So they want to redo things so they don't have to take money from the towns for the church fields and then give it back. So. This may never come up, but if it does, that's what's going on. And, and they're taking the money from. The choice fund. They can't put it back to the choice fund because it's not choice money, so it will go into their. Oh, God. It's the word that begins with an S and means emergency. The, the fund that you have. Used to be two thirds vote to take money.
Stabilization.
Stabilization, yes, sorry.
Yeah.
Stabilization, yeah. So they, they have to take it, they take it out of choice, they have to put back into stabilization and they have to do it in a way that it doesn't look like revenue. So that's.
So it's monitoring.
What?
It's monitoring.
It's, it's monitoring, but in fact, it's not revenue. Exactly. Anyway. The. MVPA zoning. Is, has moved from, we have, there's a general agreement on where the zones are going to be. Basically from. Yeah, right. The Housing Authority, Down Pine Street. Across behind Central Street. And over to Powderhouse Lane. And then another that starts at Allen Avenue with the. Dentist and the vet and goes along. Weaving across both sides of Summer Street to the gas station. And another. It starts. At. The dentist, I think, and goes out lower Summer Street across to Valentine. No, it's, no, that, that one starts at the, the other gas station, sorry. It starts at the Richdale. And for Beach and then goes along Summer Street. And picks up that one. And that puts all but about seven acres of the area that's going to be. Have overlay zoning. Over seven acres is, is actually downtown. Which. Sounds as if we're just trying to cram everything in where it's already cleared in, but in fact. If you change something from. A one family to a three family, you pick up two families. If you start in a place where there's nothing, every new building is a whole new, whole new unit. And the feeling of the task force is that the town doesn't want to fuck new units. So that's where that's going. The zoning, the acreage is. It's using the base zoning for the, the zoning for the base. Zoning district. Those districts are, I think those areas are all either general or D one, D one, D two. Now, the trick is to balance going parcel by parcel. How dense each thing has to be, because we have to average fifteen units per acre, but we can have denser areas and we can have less density. And that's a mathematical nightmare. And that's a mathematical nightmare. But fortunately, there's a spreadsheet that does it all for us and all we have to do is flick it in and. That's where that is. And kudos to Mark for, for herding that particular bunch of cats. That's what I have to say. Um. The consent agenda.
Well, let me, uh, I just want to add one, one thing here on the historic District Commission. That's the only one I need to comment on. And they won another grant last month to expand on the survey. They had, a survey is underway, has been underway for several months to survey. The entire town with regard to historical houses, but that really just becomes a listing or a to-do list, shall we say, of, okay, what about each of these sites or structures? And now, um, about, about two or three weeks ago, they won another grant from the Massachusetts Historic Commission and now start to go through that list. And I think the grant's fifteen thousand or thirty.
I think it's fifteen.
Fifteen. Which you'll get several houses out of that. And the town or the historic commission gets to decide which houses are appropriate. Um, and we'll start to work up, I think, School Street and some others that have significant properties. But it's a, it's a renewable grant. I think each year you can apply for that. And this grant was, was awarded even though the survey is not complete. The survey won't be complete until the first of June, but then can automatically roll into, uh.
I'm sorry, Mr. John, what's the grant for? Is it to enhance historical properties or to enhance the inventory?
The inventory, yes. It will provide both a structural and historical story behind each of these buildings.
And he, pick a couple of houses, you're talking about deep diving on the history of a, got it, okay.
Right, and that would, which would, uh, you know, enhance its qualification to go on the National Registry, et cetera. And I, you know, the long-term possibility is that. The historic district expands.
So this is not limited to historic district at this point?
No, it could be houses anywhere and that's what this survey was doing. And in fact, our consultant has divided the town into, I think, seven neighborhoods. But we all know the neighborhoods that you go started. Yes. And I will say, to complement this, he's also aware of the historic marker program that's been going on for several years. There are seventy-five histories that have already been written. Those are not houses that we would say we want under this grant to do because all of that information has already been researched and pretty much done by the. Robert Booth and others who have been working on that. But there are plenty of other houses that we don't know anything about. So that'll be happening.
Would you like a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
I did send some amendments to the minute, so, um, I would say motion to approve the consent agenda with. Submitted amendments to the minute.
This question?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
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 Okay. Yes.
Um, actually, you've talked about most things here. One of the regulations, John did a nice job with that. Um, I just suppose with saying that you have a forum planned for Thursday. As an informational, uh, public forum to talk about the articles at town meeting and people will put more information as they prepare. Come to town meeting, then Thursday would be a good evening to come at seven o'clock here to, or on, or on Zoom to, um. Review and answer, ask questions that people may have about the different articles.
So how, how many folks are going to be, are we all going to be able to make that?
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
I should be here. Yeah.
I, I may be a little late. I have.
You got MBTA something, right?
Oh, is that?
No, I'm, I'm going to blow off and be MBTA something. Or I will be there for the first half hour of that. If they want to argue about. How many houses can be built on a, the, head of a pin, get through that themselves. Um, but, um, I've got, I've got an appointment.
Sure.
Trying to get back on.
But will you be here in person or on Zoom or?
It should be in person. So besides that, town meeting Wednesday, the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
I, in the past, we used to schedule a meeting, a board meeting immediately before, but I don't see any reason to do it this time.
Yeah, I don't think so either. I think, I think you're in pretty good shape. Obviously, as you work up your thoughts on your particular article, let, let me know if you need any.
You'll be here.
We'll, we'll send you emails.
I'll be in.
Is this okay?
I expect you're right.
Come on, come on.
You already said you would.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And so the school budget, does Essex?